I have seven fifteen, it's Wednesday, December first. I'm gonna call the Westfield zoning board of appeals meeting to order at seven fifteen. On the agenda this evening, we have one public hearing for Smales LLC special permit. That is the first item we have on the agenda, other than that, we have a few internal, potential internal issues to discuss. Is there anybody else here for something other than the hearing on fifty-four Washington Street? No, okay. So with that said, that's the first item on our agenda. So this is a public hearing. We'll call the petitioner to introduce themselves, state their name for the record, fill us in on the petition, we've reviewed it. Obviously, we did not have an initial hearing where you would accept this and maybe kind of ask preliminary questions. So depending on how the public hearing goes, we may close and deliberate this evening, or we may want to ask for clarification or further specifications on plans, or an opportunity to say that, given that we haven't had you before us before the public hearing. So, and then we'll, you know, we'll kind of make a decision on that pending time. So with that said, I will call the petitioner for fifty-four Washington Street, that's Smales LLC, for a special permit for four dash ten point three, parentheses, three to allow for change in non-conforming use to office and other commercial uses. If the petitioner can state their name for the record, and then fill us in on the reasons for relief needed.
I'm, I'm, I'm here with Smales LLC, but I'm waiting for Neil Phillips, he was on and
Attorney Phillips was on here earlier. We did ask him to mute himself and turn off his camera until the line on. We'll call, I guess, a brief recess until we get attorney Phillips back on to do the public hearing. I guess we should also introduce ourselves now that I can see some, some more faces. I'm chairperson Kick Sullivan. Sophia, can you introduce yourself?
Yep, Sophia Bitsis member, good evening.
Christine Webster member.
And then Jen, please.
Jennifer Gilbert member.
Thank you, I'm Wayne Pierboom, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Smales, but Neil Phillips, like I said, will be signing on.
Do you want to proceed, or do, should we? Let's see, I don't know if he's gonna, why are attorney Phillips?
Hi Neil Phillips, hi.
We just called the meeting to order, and our first line item on the agenda is yours, that of the
Thank you.
Permit for Smales LLC for fifty-four Washington Street, should we state your name for the record? And then fill us in on the reasons you need relief, and we, I, I, I itemized before, but I'll recap it. We may be able to deliberate on this, this, close the public hearing, deliberate on this this evening, where we may need an opportunity to get further clarification with regard to conditions, possibly do a site visit, because we didn't have the initial hearing to accept the petition, to ask those questions, so.
Thank you.
Time and how that goes, we'll make a determination, but feel free to kick us off.
My name is Neil Phillips, and I'm the owner of Smales, and I'm involved with Dunn and Phillips Law Firm. My, my partners are Steve Thomas and attorney Wayne Pierboom, we're also on the meeting, I believe. Right now, we presently occupy a space at fifty-nine Arnold Street. And we're looking to, the reason for the purchase of this building at the Moose Lodge is to move across the street and maybe let Emma's restaurant maybe expand into our space. And we were hoping to renovate the building slowly but surely, and turn it into something other than a Moose Lodge at this point, offices right now, and we're looking to again rehab it slowly, and do something that's in keeping with the neighborhood and the community at large. It's a non-conforming use now, unbelievable, so I guess it's been that way since nineteen fifty-five or fifty-six when they opened up.
Yeah, nope, that is, so that the use is currently grandfathered, obviously, it's a change in use now under the current
Yes.
So you said you're obviously hoping to move your law offices, is it just gonna be your law offices, what's gonna be the na- what's the intended nature? Because obviously, the application has a myriad of potential uses, what's the intent?
Just in case, maybe, maybe we'll have a tenant come to us who operates a daycare or a church, or a, a some, some type of use there that's consistent with, you know, the use in the neighborhood.
Gotcha, so you, I mean, you said it's a, it's a two-floor building, so your intention is to occupy one floor and or like a portion of the building, and then have the other portion potentially be available for, you know, a retail space or rent space?
Yeah, yes, I, I don't know if you've ever been in there, but Stephen Wayne can explain it better. To the right there, there's an old bar area that we're gonna take that area and turn it into offices.
Yes, I'm, I am familiar with the building.
Oh, you are, okay, yeah, I was number in there.
But I am familiar. So any, so I understand the nature of the use, in terms of footprint, is, there's, I presume there's no change in, in, in in footprint or
None, none. We, we were gonna fix up the yard a bit, maybe offer it to the community or whatever, if somebody wanted to use it, certainly they could use it. And, but there's a side yard there, and that was closed in by an old picket fence, which we intend to tear down and open up. And it joins the parking lot, which then it joins the Elks parking lot.
Gotcha, and about how many spots are in the parking lot?
Everybody says fifty. Which is gonna open it up for Emma's, too, for his Friday and Saturday night crowd, they could park over there and walk across the street, right now, he's, he's packed.
Yep, that's, that's a tight spot over there right now.
Yeah.
Any intends to change signage or anything of that nature?
We'd like to move our sign over across the street, that's all over at the Emma's building right now, over there, as well as maybe put a pole sign up on the corner as we have across the street.
Gotcha, and that would just be presumably, I mean, how, do you have a specification about how large that would be?
Maybe equal to that one, we're trying to get a digital sign, I, I, believe it or not, before this came about, we petitioned a building inspector for a digital sign over at the old place.
Gotcha. Was that approved, or just out of curiosity?
I think the building inspector took a leave of absence, I, I, so it's on hold, and thank, thank God we didn't go through with it right away.
Understood. Jay, I mean, with regard to the signage, would that be something that we, if we, I mean, that is something I am concerned about, I don't necessarily have an objection to the petition. That you would have to, are there certain size requirements in the zone? That they would have, they'd have to abide by, and that's what they're permitted, or is that something that we would have a specific condition?
Whatever you want. Yeah, it's a residential zone, so there's very limited opportunities for signage. So that, you know, just looking at that, no, but they, there is a sign or was a sign on the building. So they have some grandfather, I guess, rights to alter that, or expand that, if you consider that under the special permit. I mean, you know, whether that rises to the level of adding a ground pole-mounted sign, I guess that's for this board to kind of decide if that's a
There's no, currently no pole sign out there right now, right? Not for the Moose Lodge.
Right, but there is a sign on the building, so there, I guess, some signage grandfathering, and so it's a discussion for this group as to whether how far, you know, before it becomes potentially detrimental to
A pole sign kind of changes the flavor of that building, in my opinion. That changes the, you know, a pole sign, electronic sign, any of that type of stuff, I mean, I think I'm not opposed to signage on the building, I get that, but I don't think in a residential neighborhood like that, I just don't, I just don't think that would I mean, I'll defer to the others, and I think that's, that's definitely a deviation from what it looks like right now. So, I don't know about that.
Just to put it out there, electronic sign, meaning a sign that has a changing or moving message, would not be allowed in that district, or in the district currently.
Not even an issue, so it's not even a consideration.
Yeah, so that's
Perfect. What's the rule on the pole sign, though? They would be the same thing, correct?
Well, I mean, it depends, again, they're, they're relying on grandfathered rights, so
But there's no pole sign there right now.
There's no pole sign, but there's a sign.
But it's on the building, correct?
Right, so I mean, I think it's a reasonable interpretation for to say you can continue to have signage on the building. It may be a stretch, but maybe not untenable to say you could offer that to a, expand that to a pole ground sign.
Were you thinking you'd replace the existing pole sign, like, take that existing pole sign and just relocate it? Because there's one at the, your, the property right now.
No, we keep that one also.
Oh, okay.
And may, maybe allow Emma's to use it. We haven't worked, we haven't talked to them about that yet.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, can we back up? Where's the pole sign at the Moose Lodge, Jen?
Not at the lodge, the existing one, it exists across the street at their existing location.
Ah, okay, got it.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that would be something I would, I think I'd wanna see plans for, either one way or the other, I don't know that I'm necessarily against the pole sign, I don't have an objection to the signage on the building. I think I may object to, we don't have to consider it the electronic signage. But I, I don't, I don't think I would have to add further, I don't need to see further plans for the current signage on the building, because obviously, that would be just conform, continuing general use. Sophia, Jen, do you have any serious concerns about the, I mean, Christine's voicing about the pole signage? Serious objection to, I think we probably should deal with that now.
Just a quick question, has there been any thought to possibly doing a zone change with the Abadark's? It looks like BA is pretty close. Has there been any exploration of expanding the BA zone down onto this parcel?
Uh, I, uh, planning did mention that might be an option, but I, I said, well, I, I, we'll go for this first. Just so we can get going in there, i- if you allow us to do that.
And then the only other question or concern is that, I guess, not to get with signage, but as far as usual, I think I would wanna see what future uses would go in there as well, so I would maybe be up to place a condition that if there's another, you know, other than office-based proposed, that they'd have to come back to us and seek further approval, like daycare or a church or something like that, that may change the character of the neighborhood. But those would be my two comments, I mean, just seeing that BA is so close, it might be cleaner just to go for a zone change, but that's just a personal suggestion.
Would you entertain one at some point in the future?
Well, they wouldn't go through our, our board, so that would be something completely different, but just, you know, past experience, it just may be an option for you guys.
Thank you. I think it's reasonable, given that building is, you know, it's not residential in nature, and it's commercial right across the street, and that may solve the signage issue that we're, change. And just for the record, so a church would be allowed to go in there by right?
Okay.
As an exempted use.
Because we were told two churches had been on the property, also, and I hope to get the names of those churches, I was gonna contact them to see if they wanted to rent the space now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I agree with Sophia that I would be, as a condition, I do think that I would, I guess, I don't know what, in terms of running into trouble, if we could restrict, you know, exempt to the churches, but right now, I, you know, knowing that it's gonna be, you know, professional offices, I would, I'm more inclined to limit the use, knowing the application and what it's gonna be for, and the nature of the neighborhood, to, I don't have an objection to that, but some of the other uses that may or may not fit the zone, given that, I mean, it does very closely about residential areas. But, I mean, we, if we were to limit it to solely professional offices, is that, I mean, is that something that we could do, Jay, or just by right that we cannot exempt the churches, is that, would that be
Like, you can't, you can't require a special permit for religious use. And daycare may even be allowed in residential districts, so there's certain things they could do without your approval. Now, a church may trigger like a site plan approval from the planning board to look at parking and things like that, but in terms of any discretion, you don't have, you can't say no church, no exempted use.
Understood. Go ahead, Christine, please.
Well, we could just simply say it's approved for, you know, professional office space, with just the understanding that if they bring in a church, we don't have any right to, we don't have any right to, they're allowed to do that. So I mean, that, because it's by rights, I don't even think we'd have to say it, we'd just approve them to to use it for professional office space at this point. You know, accountants, lawyers, doctors, that type of a thing. And then, and then, that way, because isn't there a definition as opposed to retail space? Like, we can limit it so that it can't be used as retail space, right? Because don't professional offices fall separately, I don't have my zoning book in front of me, but they're defined separately.
My, professional offices is a separate defined term.
Yeah, it's a separate use.
Right, so we, so we give them that, that we allow that use, because it's consistent, conform, you know, with the prior use arguably, and then we just say, you know, no, no retail use, without approval, right?
Right, or we just say that, you know, that it's for professional offices and/or other exempted uses, and shall it be anything other than an exempted use, then we would, they'd have to come before us again.
Yep.
Yeah, and again, unless, unless they did the zone change, and that would open up a lot of commercial uses without having to go through you.
Yeah, I, I think I'm inclined to do that, knowing the use, and, you know, being familiar with the professional offices, and obviously, it opens up a little bit toward the exempted uses as well, I think that makes sense. Sounds like all the, the rest of the board is on, is on board with that. Do we want it?
The only thing, I'm sorry, Kick, the only thing I would add is, is for the signage, too, just to touch upon that, again, I think I agree that there is, you know, a mounted sign on the building right now, so I'd be willing to go along with having a mounted sign, but as far as an additional, you know, pylon or something being installed, I don't, I don't know that that would conform, I agree with Christine on that, that, I don't know that that would be you know, a good idea.
Hundred percent, I, I definitely agree with that, in just for clarity purposes, Jay, if we, what if we put no, like, you know, they're allowed to use a signage that's currently existing, and we didn't put a specific, you know, regulation, specification that they're not allowed to have pole signage? Would, to the fact that we're not permitting to have pole signage prevent them from doing that, or is that, I don't, I don't wanna create a prejudice in that decision, if down the road, if they wanted to reapply for it, and we could revisit it, I'd be okay with that, leaving the option open, I just don't want that, I, I do feel uncomfortable leaving that option open as of right.
Yeah, I mean, you could say no signs limited to the building, except as maybe permitted by zone change or some language like that.
Because if they do further down the line, Kick, go for a zone change, and that'll open up a whole nother host of opportunity for them.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't, I mean, right now, I think I agree with everybody, I don't think it's appropriate to grant that, to, to permit that, but I don't, I also don't necessarily feel inclined to put prejudice on the record that they can't do that. I just
Yeah, I guess if it were to be a zone change, the special permit would not be needed
Right.
relied on for offices or anything else, so I guess if they change the zone, they wouldn't have to be bound by any of your conditions, I would think.
Okay, fun title search, but yeah, so I mean, I think I'm on board with that, I mean, I would be in favor of wrap decision, you know, I, I don't think that the professional offices are substantial detriment to the neighborhood, the use is different than what is currently existing. But obviously, it's very unlikely that someone's gonna buy that property, you know, take down the structure and erect a single-family home, which is what, probably what the only thing it's zoned for. So it makes sense to have, there's directly across the street, there's a restaurant and existing professional offices, I think it makes sense to extend that use to this property. It's, I think it's in general conformity and harmony with the neighborhood, I don't really have any objections to allowing them to, you know, with the limitations that it's professional offices, except as otherwise permitted by right. They can continue signage as it's currently existing, you know, to the, to the nature of the business. I don't think I really have any other, I, I like to discuss the conditions, so we can run them by the petitioners, would there be any other conditions that the board would want to propose? Jen, no?
No, I don't think so, I think that really is a good summation. But yeah, it's not changing the neighborhood, that people, you know, are used to seeing an attorney in the neighborhood, that's in the residential area, and, you know, that by professional offices, that, yeah, it's in performance, in my opinion.
Right, I mean, probably reducing foot traffic, it's not a bar anymore, so it's probably a help, I guess, in that nature. Does the board feel comfortable closing the public hearing and deliberating this evening on this matter, or do we need to get further clarification from the petitioners, or
No.
No.
Let's just close it up.
I agree. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on fifty-four Washington Street, do I hear a second?
Second.
Sophia, a second, I'll take roll call, chairperson Kick Sullivan, aye, Sophia.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
And Jen.
Aye.
So this is now, the public hearing is closed, we are opening the deliberations, still public meeting. But obviously, we can no longer take further comments from the petitioners or the public, actually, hold on. I'm going to go back to before the vote, is there anybody else here to speak in favor or against the petition of fifty-four Washington Street? Christine, if you could go back and put that comment before closing the public hearing, that would be nice, for the record. Apologize. All right, so now we'll go back into the deliberations, again, it's a closed deliberation amongst the board members, still public hearing, can no longer take further comment. So I, I would vote in favor of the approving the special permit for fifty-four Washington Street, with the, you know, I think it's in general conformity, it's not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. With the caveat that, the condition be that it's, it's used for professional office spaces, as, except as otherwise permitted as of right. They can use the signage as currently existing for the nature of the business. I don't really think I have much further comments, is, any of the board members have any other specifications or comment?
I just don't know if we can include language, is that if there's anything other than office spaces proposed and/or an exempted use, that they'd have to come back for either amending this special permit or applying for a new one, for a change of use? Jay, does that make sense, just to add some extra language in there?
Yeah, so limited to office use unless
Otherwise exempt in the zone?
Yeah.
Should they have to, you know, should there be something other than that, that they'd come back before us, run it by us, I guess?
I would think that would be implied, if it's not specified, that the, the relief is granted, they would have to come back for us for an amendment.
If it's specified it was limited to office use, then any change from that would be the restaurant would not be in compliance, so they'd need to come back, but we can be a little more specific. And again, if it, if the zone gets changed, which I think is reasonable.
Should we put in there that subject to a zone, a, a zone change being granted, just so that's clear that this, this relief would be updated if that were to be issued?
Yeah, you could, we could put in the findings of board, as, you know, because discuss the possibility of a zone change, and the need, that would open up other uses.
Christine, you think that's helpful, or?
I mean, it kind of really doesn't matter, but
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's, it's implied they gotta come back, if it's only for professional, you can't do anything else, you know? If I see, you know, Dunn and Phillips Candle Making Factory, then, you know, they're gonna be in violation, you know what I mean?
Gonna send Panar over there next week, have her start making candles.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, in the basement. Light the place on fire, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Light it up, we won't need a pole sign.
So I guess, I'll make a motion to accept the petition on fifty-four Washington, unless any of the other board members have further comments, to accept it, it's discussed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Christine, I'll take roll call, chairperson Kick Sullivan, aye, Sophia.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
And Jennifer, please.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries, so attorney Phillips, it, you'll be hearing from the planning department with regard to the approval and recording, et cetera. Carrie's, congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of luck, and we are gonna move on with our agenda, so feel free to leave us if you're so inclined.
Thank you, yeah, thank you very much. Thanks.
And the only other items we have on our agenda are those that Jay noted in his email to us, if we wanted to discuss the residential kennel requirements and the plot plan requirements, I did review those, I didn't know if everybody else had time to review those proposals, do we want to discuss those this evening?
Like, no, I'm just kidding. Or are you coming back in person?
That's all, we should, oh, we should also discuss our next meeting, I guess, the, do you anticipate any other applications for the end of this postponed till January?
Yeah, nothing's come in, so
I would say that I would suggest our next meeting be, what's the, so that'll be the first Wednesday in January, which is January fifth, does anyone have objections to that?
No, it's fine.
And I will, do we want to make a motion to let Jay schedule hearings administratively, if anything comes in that we can schedule? So I'll make a motion to schedule administrative with Jay's approval, for any hearings that come in between now and the January fifth meeting, that can be noticed properly, do we hear a second?
Second.
Sophia, I'll take roll call, chairperson Kick Sullivan, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Sophia.
Aye.
And Christine.
Aye.
Okay, so we're there, and then we can double back to, and just to be clear, I'm we wanna have that meeting be via Zoom as well?
Yeah, it's gonna be called out.
I second that.
Agreed.
Does that work for you, for Jay and Chris, too?
I'm a cron, we're all the, we'll all be remote.
Oh, God.
We'll go with that, we'll go with it.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so I, um, I'll take, I'll take the, I'll take a little bit of our, um, we go to the plot plans, do, we've kind of been objecting because they are, they can be cost prohibitive. And a lot of people don't want to pay for things unless they're going to be granted. Um, but it also, it, it seems that all the other boards and cities and, as well as Chris, have the right to insist on them. It may make lives a little bit easier if we have those before us, I don't know.
But here's the problem, Kick. The plot plan is just, it, the plot plan that you're going to get isn't, isn't necessarily going to give them a pin of the boundary lines. It's not really gonna, you know, what is it, what information is it that we as a ZBA are trying to get? Um, that would require that somebody needs to give us a plot plan. They would need to give us more of a pin survey if we're trying to be precise about how far they are off the lot lines and stuff like that. Cause somebody just pulls up their, you know, their mortgage inspection survey that they got when they bought their house. Well, nothing is to scale on, you know what I mean? It's not.
I absolutely agree with you both, and I know that, that, um, you know, that, that's not the same thing as a full survey instrument. And I would love to have those to make lives a lot easier in a lot of cases. Um, but to require that is certainly very cost prohibitive. Um, I can't wrap my head around.
No, no, and that's why I'm saying, like, why, why can't, why can't we just use the assessor's maps? That's just as good as a plot plan.
I mean, quite frankly, that's what a lot of the plot plans look like.
That's it, that's all it is, you know what I mean? So it's kind of like, I think it's still got to be a case by case thing. Like, we could always have a situation in which we have to say to them, well, you're gonna, unfortunately, you're gonna have to give us a plan. But some of these, I think, they're able to just use the assessor's maps.
Yeah, it were, I mean, they are proceeding at their own risk too. I mean, they could spend the money to get, I mean, well, I think everybody here agrees, like, if they spent the money, it'd be money well spent to make sure that what they're petitioning for is gonna, you know, run with the property. And it's not just gonna, as soon as they go to sell, rear its head and we create a larger issue for them. Um, you'd like to think people wouldn't do that. Um.
Well, most builders and contractors, like, I'm dealing with this right now, a client trying to put up a garage in, uh, Munson, and they're, they are, again, requiring that she give, and they won't accept the, it's land court and they won't take my plot plan survey from her closing. So it's very, um, it, they want a full PIN survey, so the contractor does too, because he wants to make sure he's not building on, um, I think it's overkill for crying out loud. I mean, I can clearly see where the lot, where the lines are and, but, so I just think though, that if we make it like a, a hard and fast requirement, there's going to be a lot of times where we don't need it, or somebody's going to be able to bring us something less than an official plot plan that we'll be able to use and determine. You know what I mean, I just, I hate it, because I know how much, how expensive they can get and how much it can delay. So like, like, right now, this with, we don't need a lot, we don't need a plot plan survey for the Moose Lodge.
No, it's usually something if you're building something.
Right, if you're building something, I get it, absolutely, but depends on what it is.
Yeah, I mean, the past, recently, we've had people, you know, you've seen the sketches that come in that are pretty rudimentary, when they think they know where their property line is and they don't know. They're getting two feet or five feet to the line, which, we don't know that's where the line is. So again, yeah, it is, it is their risk, you know, we grant them a permit for X amount of feet. If it someday turns out it was over the line or less than, yeah, that's their problem, but, um.
Well, I don't even think that, Jay, I think that some of what I'm seeing is, you know, they are the only way to definitively know if we're going to say, yes, you could be so many feet off is on a plan. But as somebody who does, I don't run into a whole bunch of, um, I don't think I've ever run into a situation where I've had somebody buying a house and we've been able to say, oh, you know what, they were given approval to be three feet off the property line and they are two. Because there's no way to definitively go out there and check for that stuff.
It's not required on.
Yeah, yeah, I did, I sent you that sketch, you know, that, you know, the board approved a five-foot setback that was a builder sketched on, and when a survey came back, it showed that was actually over the property line.
Um, yeah, but that's so rare, and then that's on the builder. But didn't they have to have an A and R plan done anyway as part of the, they were putting a new lot, they were, were they putting like, hadn't they done an A and R, or no?
No, no.
It was just a sketch by the builder?
Yeah, customary to what we often get, so, uh, uh, the point is, I mean, I guess it's not your problem, it'd be good to have as much information as you can in making decisions. And, you know, maybe if it's, you know, X amount of feet to the property line, it's more of an issue that it might be
Right.
Um, over it than if it was, you know, fourteen feet instead of fifteen feet, but, uh, the fact.
Maybe we can just have it on a case by case basis, where we have the, we have the ability to require it if we deem it necessary.
Yeah, and again, the building inspector can require it, so regardless of what you do, when they go to get their building permit, the building can make them provide a survey plan that shows it's in compliance with what you grant. Now, if it isn't, that, that's either back to you to kind of.
Right.
So it's, it's, if they're going to do it anyway, it'd be nice to have it as part of your hearing. I don't know that the inspector will require it for most of these, but, but she has the ability to.
I know other municipalities are actually making them a requirement, um, because we've been doing a lot of them lately. So, I mean, it can go either way, like, like Jay said, I mean, it can get expensive, but it, it's, what caliber do we need it? You know what I mean? Um, but, I mean, obviously.
Could we do it as like a threshold, like if the, you know, if they're within five feet or two feet or whatever, we, we decide that, that at least that way people kind of know going in. That it, you know, if you're a certain amount away, that you're asking for, uh, you know, exemption or an amendment to it. Could we do it that way, at least that way they know when they're going in? Cause the, the, like, once you're getting in the one, two foot, that's definitely in the margin of error, just from my
Right.
experience for assessor's maps, that's being digitized and it's roughed in. Um, and so, you know, one foot, two foot is most definitely, I, I mean, I have, um, in my experience with needing to get temporary easements for putting in sewer lines, we show just the assessors information on our drawings typically, unless we know we're going to have impacts and we need to get a temporary easement. And I typically, it's in the one to three range, um, once we actually get the boundary survey, survey done.
Yeah, tho- those are like encroachment issues, but if you grant a permit for thirteen feet away and it ends up being twelve, it's still out of compliance with what we've granted, so.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, the planning board too, if you go to apply for site plan approval, like, you know, you need a plan, you know, and it's, I mean, we grant similar relief. And not that I'm looking to open up a can of worms for more plans being requested, but, um, just as a liability thing, if it does become an encroachment, like Jay said, it possibly could come back to us and say, okay, well, you granted relief, now it's not built in conformance, or they went, you know, why did you grant it based on what was provided? I don't know, I just, maybe we just keep doing a case by case, I guess, depending on what is proposed, instead of mandating it.
You know, you're dealing often with homeowners and sheds and garages as opposed to Walmart and
Yeah.
the like, so.
I just, for something like a shed, I would feel like, really like, here, let's go get yourself a thirty-five hundred dollar survey to come here and, you know, and your shed is worth thirty-five hundred dollars just so you can move it, you know what I mean? So we got to have the ability to not have to, we, we have to be able to be flexible and not have it know, every single thing, no matter what, you've got to, you've got to give it to us, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, and I think under our current authority, we have the right to, you know, request
Right.
the plan or survey if we need it. I think.
So we'll just have to keep looking at, and if all of them, if some of them look like, no, 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 these people are going to put a garage up, we need to have a survey.
Yeah, I think that's, I agree, it's just too cost prohibitive and it, a plot plan helps sometimes and it just, it's just money not well spent other times, so, um, I guess we can probably move on to the next issue. Um, that's the kennel. Um, do we want, I'm just going to time, seven fifty-three. Um, I say we have time to discuss this this evening. Um, did everybody have time to read Jay's proposals, or?
I, I'll be honest, I did not.
Sophie, did you?
I did, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm total, I'm fine with, with what's proposed, so, um, we can either table it if, if Christine wants to take a peek at it, or.
I'm actually, you know what, I think I did read that.
Yeah, I read it and I'm okay with it as well.
Yes, yes, I did, this is the amendment, yeah.
For the record, so there's, um, it's generally more presi- permissive for residential, um, kennel uses. Um, eliminate the six, the big thing is eliminate the sixty thousand lot area requirement for home kennels. As residential A district, uh, for home kennel option, and make language consistent throughout, rebrand residential kennels as a home kennel. Um, I think all of Jay's proposals make total sense. Um, and we've had two kind of heartbreakers in the past year. Um, that I think this, it was a problem. It's, you know, we don't know, no one, including neighbors, have objections for the most part, to the people having the dogs. They just don't want a kennel run next to them.
Right, no, I agree, I, I did, I did read that, I'm sorry, that was the one with the, yeah. I'm fine with it.
If we wanted to move forward with these, would we just have to make a motion to propose it to council?
Right, yeah, I, I'll just say that, um, so the big thing was the sixty, the lot area requirement. And, you know, we could just propose that change if you wanted, but if we're going to go through this, I kind of just went through and, and looked at, you know, maybe expanding it to other districts. One other district residential A for, just four dogs max, is maybe a, um, because I've gotten calls, people want, you know, I want a fourth dog, and I look up their property and they're not in rural residential, I say, you know, no. They're not usually happy, but, so, you could consider that, maybe that's a controversial change, I don't know, but. And the other thing was, um, they're called residential kennels, um, but when that goes out on hearing notice, I get calls, what, what are they, you know, they think they're kennels for dogs residences, so they're going to be living there and, and so, something like a home kennel might have, is more consistent with the way it operates. Um, but I'd still leave residential kennel in the ordinance because thi- this is the same language that's used in the animal control ordinance separately. So I don't want to get them too out of touch, so, home kennel, see residential, a residential kennel, see home kennel, whatever, but just to be consistent with the animal control officers ordinances, which are not, not zoning ordinances, but they overlap this, we would keep that residential kennels buried in, in a definitions.
Hope you're muted. I think you're muted.
That, uh, yeah, Jay, I agree with all your proposals and I would make a motion that we propose, um, revisions to council, uh, do I hear a second on that?
Second.
So then, uh, all those in favor, Chairperson Kick Sullivan, aye, Sophia.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
And Jennifer.
Aye.
So that carries, um, do we know when that will be on council's agenda, or?
Uh, I'll submit it for, I guess, the next meeting this Thursday, so the two weeks should be in room one from two weeks from today, from tomorrow. And then, um, they'll probably have their hearing late January.
You call, see if you can cancel, consolidate it.
So, um, thanks for that, Jay, so I think that.
We have consolidated and Starlink.
Christine, you're not muted, just have a.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, no worries. Um, do, I think the only other item I have on the agenda is to approve the minutes, um, that Chris sent us. I would make a motion to approve the minutes, um, as presented by Chris, wait a second. I guess, did anybody, did everybody review them, or do we want to table that?
Yeah, I ran out of time today, I didn't get a chance.
Yeah, same.
We'll table that then.
Sorry, Chris.
I did read them, Chris, so. And I think that's it, am I incorrect, is there anything else on the agenda, Jay?
Nope.
Okay, I would make a motion to adjourn until our, um, Wednesday, January fifth. Um, hearing, uh, same time.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, Chairperson Sullivan, aye, Christine.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
Sophia.
Aye.
All right, so happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holidays.
See you in a few.